Oh.
Well, I think we start the meeting. Patsy can call it the order and then we can discuss this.
Yes, yeah.
Well, why don't we go in order and then we could discuss it as it comes up?
That's yes. So let's start.
Item six is discussion on stuff.
Yeah, why haven't we? Okay, why haven't? We started the meeting, please?
It is recording now according to my screen.
And we're being live streamed also.
Okay.
There we are.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Patsy Brescher, Chairman of the Charter Revision Commission for the City of Norwalk. And we have a meeting hopefully this evening is our final step in approving the charter and sending it on to to the common council. Are there any public participants at this time?
None.
None, okay. In addition, we have not received the minutes from our last meeting of last week, so there are no minutes before us. So I will ask our, where's Vodder take a roll call? And Benita, Raleigh Watson?
Present.
Tyler?
Here.
Here, Angela Wasuna?
Here.
Carl Dickens? Rick McQuaid?
Here, I'm here. McQuaid's not.
Charles Dickens is here. Rick McQuaid?
Is not.
Not present and Michael Witherspoon?
I don't see him.
Okay, but we do have a quorum, Patsy Brescher also, so we have a quorum and we can proceed. Steve, can you please lead us through this process?
I'll be happy to. And I also want to point out that Commissioner McQuaid has a family obligation, has his son getting married on this weekend. But either Carl or I are going to call him before the vote so that he could actually participate in the final vote by the commission this evening. So I committed to making sure that he would he would be able to do that. So let me share the screen. Let me get this up on the screen. I hope this is the right thing. Do I have the charter on the screen?
Yes.
All right, good. Not some embarrassing letter. Okay, good. Always worry about that. All right.
We're not a page one though.
Well, there's no need to be on page one because there's nothing on page one being changed.
Okay.
Right. And I'm going to fix the paging because page one is a title page and it shouldn't be. So make sure on the final version, the paging is corrected. So I want to just go through the changes since the last meeting. I capitalized taxing districts in in the in the opening statement. This is the kind of novel statement that we put together. The in context, I've also deleted the four year term. Whoops, as one of the accomplishments of this charter revision. So that is taken care of. Let me see where the next change is.
And while we're there, the last item, just for the record, because we're going to discuss some of this after division chiefs and department structure is here.
Yeah, so, yeah. And the next change is in capital budget. Capital budget. I did talk to the CFO and he confirmed and others confirmed that the capital budget means the first fiscal year of the five year program of capital expenditures for which it is proposed for the purpose of authorizing expenditures during such fiscal year. So
That that makes it much clearer. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Pleasure. Thank you for raising it. And the second part of that is the five year program of capital expenditures, which we didn't change because I think it did accurately reflect what we did, but it does. The other definition actually cleans it up a bit. We fixed some language here, modified some language. Capital and meeting, we meetings to meeting, minor stuff. And we we eliminated the last sentence and put the clause in the body of it, as I think was recommended by the common council. We also, we also on the next page, put the definition of quorum in there. It's the majority of the entire membership of the council or any border commission. That's now a defined term in the charter. And then as a result of the work that I did with the subcommittee that was created by the common council, we added the second paragraph to, well, we actually broke up what was used to be subsection. They had no, it actually had no number attached to it. It was basically part one was a standalone sentence or two. And what we did is I added this final thing to define entire membership. So that there's no dispute debate what entire membership means. We talked about this at the last meeting and this simply articulates that.
Okay, so so far to this piece, does anybody have any questions or comments? So we're all good with all so far. Okay. Let's see no hands. Let's go forward.
Recusal. We added here that the recusal standards. The tracks came up concept of that we have to be doing it in accordance with the ethics ordinance. And then we, I kept the concept as may be amended from time to time, not form time to time, from time to time. I'll fix that. So that's the concept there. Remember, we were trying to figure out how that was dealt with and it should be the ethics ordinance. As the chair, as Patsy pointed out. And I also thought that we were dealing with it as an amendment, but I think her approach to having it in accordance with the ethics ordinance makes a lot of sense.
It's clear, I think. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next change is breach of rules. And this was a language that was recommended by the by the council and I think we added in here that the members of the boards and commissions may be subject to removal in accordance with the provisions of seven dash one E. To deal with the rules. Remember seven dash one E is the grounds for removal and the breach of of rules. If you keep violating them could be a basis for removal from a border commission.
And is the word, the last word below staying or going?
I think it's staying. It's highlighted because the comment is on it. You see that?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to clarify.
That's why, that's why it looks the way it does.
Okay.
The next section, I did have court council's office look at it as well. And a number of people look at it as well. Is the term of office? Remember, we had to go from the four year term to the two year term. And so all this language does that. And it takes the mayor out of the exceptions because the mayor is not an exception. He still will have a two year term. And there is a transition provision regarding the the dates of the
I tied to this further on under town clerk, I I think it says the first Monday.
No, it's the registrar, the registrar.
Oh, the register.
Yeah, and and the reason for that, take a look at the, can you see the note on the side?
In accordance, yes.
The state statute governs the the term of the registrar voters.
Okay.
So that's why it didn't change.
Okay, so do we have that reference in here so that people can understand why?
Let me take a look at the footnote. Hold on.
Hey, can you, can you back back up a bit?
What? Let's deal with this and then we'll back up, please.
No, but I can put it in if you want it.
Well, I think it clarifies it because I, you know, when I read it for the 50th time, I said, why is that on the first Monday, you know? So I think saying
Yeah, I'll put a reference in or I'll put a note bottom. We have these comments of the charter commission that the reason this isn't changed is the section nine dash one ninety of the general stat, one ninety eight establishes their term of office.
Okay, okay, so good. All right, so Carl, what is it, Carl?
Back where the terms were?
Yeah.
I'm saying if I start with January twenty twenty six following the election and until on the day prior to the first business day of January twenty twenty eight, somewhere I saw in here something it said where everything was struck, the election of twenty fifteen. And I think
Oh, it's right there, right there.
Yeah, so twenty twenty five should be there. The strike mark shouldn't that be?
You're absolutely right.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, it says four years in there as well.
Well, that's the Board of Education.
That's the board. I'm sorry, okay.
That's all right. Why am I saying that's all right? I love you.
Let me think about that for a second. Hold on a second here.
Yeah.
I don't think we need this provision.
No.
No, we we put this provision in here because we were trying to conform it to the four year term for mayor. So I think we should, this might
Strike the whole thing.
I think this may have come out. I will take a look at it, but do I have your authority to take it out if I confirm that it should come out?
Okay, let's vote on that.
The Board of Ed, the Board of Ed would stay.
The Board of Ed is a four year term, but they don't need a transition provision. That's what that's, I'm glad Carl caught that. Because I already have it.
You have my permission to take the transition part of that out.
Yeah.
Does everyone agree? Okay, I see affirmatives from everybody on present.
I will take that out. Glad you caught that, Carl. If you didn't, I'm sure that somebody on the council would have.
Somebody, yeah, it just
Yeah.
No big deal.
No, no, it's a big deal. Thank you. Good commission. Thank you very much. The next section, I'll go slowly here, but I don't think there's any.
And so the register also says Monday.
Well, that is the register. That's what I said.
Yeah.
It's not. That's what we talked about.
Yeah, and so we're adding the as per
We're going to add the the comment.
Yes, okay. All right.
Add comment. I'll write that in big letters on my copy. There we go. Section three dash eight. I'm not going over anything that we discussed the other day. I'm just looking at the things that were resolved. This was council member. One of the council members, I'm drawing a blank.
Yeah, yeah, why, why, and I brought
Camacho, Camacho. And so we fixed the language as Ed Camacho had suggested. Now, the word member is duplicate. Yeah.
So that was one of my comments.
Yeah, that's got to come out.
Yeah, council member, member, member.
Yeah. And then the rest of it, I think, reads better. So we'll take that out of it and that will that will work well. Yes. Can't believe I we're still there. Okay.
Actually, I had that right in my notes to you. Everything else was wrong, but I had the right.
That's where it was. I couldn't figure that one out.
Yeah, that's where it is.
That's where it is. Because the way it read, I couldn't figure it out and see where it was. Three dash eight. Because he said at the end, it was at the beginning. It was in the beginning of, all right. That that was where I was going nuts. I was couldn't find it. There you go. We got it. The next one is this. So we make it clear that following the twenty twenty five election, because remember the terms of office are going to change to the second Tuesday in January.
Correct.
We had a transition provision. We really don't need it. Because this charter won't be in effect with the election of the members this time. The current charter will still govern, so they will have their meeting in November. They don't need a transition provision because when this takes effect, they'll already be in office.
Right, yeah, this is there isn't an election that affects us until twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so so that was a unnecessary transition provision. The I don't need the second comment there. All right. And then this, again, Ed Camacho and I went through this language. And I'm okay with it. The way we changed it, he was okay with it. It's just clearer. And let me tell you what this is, guys. This is a first time I've actually articulated this in a charter. I've been wanting to do it for a long time. This is the famous case in home rule called the rule in Dylan's case from eighteen sixty eight in Nebraska. And this is where you establish the rules of home rule. And so this definition is basically taken from going back to eighteen sixty eight, but using language that the Supreme Courts of Connecticut have adopted over the years to really spell out what home rule is and what the power, the legislative authority is. So Ed was okay with this language and that's what that reflects.
Yeah, I remember covering that for CBS.
There you go. Eighteen sixty eight back then, yeah, that was good. Yeah, I heard you were the reconstruction guy back then. You were covering reconstruction.
Yeah, let's the record note that Michael with this one is has joined the meeting.
Wonderful.
Or I don't know how long you've been there, Michael, but I've just noticed. Thank you.
All right, let me see where the next, the next changes are for a while. And we'll get to that department stuff at the end, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yeah, yes.
The stuff now, these are all the term, you'll see the the terms. We talked about this at the last meeting. Where the
Yeah, we did, adding the word council.
It's the next change, I think, is in five dash four, but I want to go slowly, just in case there is something we should talk about. This again, there's no change in the voting standard. No changes here. These were modified earlier. All right, now. No change there. Here's the first one. So here's the section. We I think the commission looked at it. I've talked to the administration about this. I've talked to the corporation council's office about it. And and we end up leaving this, even though everybody agreed with council member Camacho that this should be removed. And and so and when I talked to him the other day, I said, I don't disagree with you and and I'm not sure anybody else does, but we were just afraid to pull the trigger. He asked us to pull the trigger. And so the question I have for all of you is, do you want to eliminate this provision? Which is a historic provision. But as he points out, he believes that under the vagueness doctrine that he just doesn't think that this would be anything but legally void. I can't disagree with him. And corp counsel couldn't. I was trying to get course corp council's permission to remove it, but they didn't feel comfortable saying we should remove it. I also thought, why not, when when we're tackling this again within the next two years? Maybe the next commission should take a look at this, but I wanted to point out that council member Camacho felt pretty very strongly about it. I wanted to convey his views. I don't disagree with his views, but you have to make a judgment as to whether you want to leave it or take it out.
And so basically you're saying corporation council doesn't agree to take it out at this point.
Corporation council didn't give me the go ahead.
Go ahead to take it up.
They weren't opposed or in support. It's just they 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 would not say use your judgment and take it out. It's something I wanted their consent on. And now look, the council always we're including this in our final report. And and let me just think about this for a second here.
Benita, in a minute, when he finishes.
Oh.
Benita has a question.
All right, I'm happy to answer.
Well, I just guess I'm wondering why it should stay in. What 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 exactly, what's its purpose?
I I was wondering the same thing. This, this, this to me seems like one of those archaic things, like a home run to take out. I don't know why this.
Yeah, I do think that, I mean.
I I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that may be the best approach to it if we take it out. And let's say corp council objects, the council could reject our report and put it back in. If we don't do anything with it, they can't do anything with it. So I think, but, Nina, thank you for pushing us, but I think that that the thing to do is to take it out.
I think so.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, what's that?
Yeah, so I, I I don't know why I, well, I mean, I personally, I didn't, oh, sorry. Catch it the first time around. I mean, that that to me seems like an easy one to get rid of.
Yeah, it's probably true.
Because I probably, I probably am responsible for it because I probably said, you know, I asked and everybody
Well, no, we all looked at it and none of us said anything at the time.
So I'm not, I'm not flogging myself. Don't worry, I'm okay.
All right, wait a minute. Everybody's talking at once here. So is anyone not in favor of removing it?
I only have a question.
Okay, Carl has a question and that is?
The vagueness, vagueness doctrine, what does that mean?
That the concept is too vague told somebody criminally responsible. So his concern was line three, one, two, three. Somebody reasonably neglects to refuse. That's the, that's what Ed was pointing to. Let's say a member of the council stands up and says to the mayor something unreasonably refuses or unbelievably neglects to refuse a the mayor by disagreeing with them on the floor of the council. Now, I think they're protected on the floor of the council, but this thing is so vague. You could argue that that person is out of order and in violation of section five dash four of the charter. If they, you know, resist or abuse the mayor or hinder the mayor, is it hindering the mayor to not support him on a piece of legislation? We all know that that's not the case. But is it so vague that you can argue that it is the case? I think that's what the concern about vagueness is.
So would this lead? How how big a dispute, let's say the scenario you laid out? Would that lead to a lengthy drawn out legal challenge or would that be?
Yeah, potentially. Look. Yeah, potentially. The fact that the corp council's office knew nothing about this provision means that this provision has not been exercised.
Correct.
Or in any way, shape or form.
Is is the, is the concern around neglects to refuse or the spirit of the PC, which is anyone who's hindering or resisting in the execution of office? Because it seems to me that Camacho was focusing more on on that vague.
Yeah, he was focused on this.
So if we took that out, I'm just, again, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here, like the spirit of this of this provision, what is it trying to say? That somebody who hinders the mayor or resists the mayor or abuses a man in the execution of office. It's very specific.
No, but what does it mean? What is what is hindering the mayor in the execution of office? Standing, standing in the door, not letting him into the room or what does it mean?
A spontaneous protest on the floor of council if he's speaking, would that be considered that?
You know, that's where the vagueness comes in because none of us can answer that question.
Yeah, how about bashing the mayor on social media?
But it's, it doesn't, wait a minute.
You could even argue like bashing the mayor on social media is
a big part of this.
Yeah.
Does that hinder his execution of of his duties? I mean, does that?
That's where I think you're at the vagueness coming because it's just so.
We, what if you had a mayor who interpreted any resistance to an initiative he's trying to do as hindering what he's trying to do?
Right. With you, I'm just, I'm just trying to be very clear as to why we're removing the entire thing and just be able to explain it to constituents if we're asked.
Yeah.
Can I ask what? What willfully means? I mean, it's all, it's, this is
intent.
Willfully is a, willfully is not the vague part. I mean, there are standards of willfulness that the courts look to. So that doesn't concern me.
But wouldn't that happen in the court of law? And why does it have to be here? I mean, if somebody abused the mayor, somebody, they would be arrested.
Yeah.
They assaulted or battered the mayor, surely you don't need this provision. This is about, you know, this is about hindering, you know.
Well, this is talking more verbal abuse than it would be physical, though.
Well, who knows?
Why? I mean, but that, but I mean, I think that's the problem with it is you can interpret it any way you want it. And if you if you had a thin mayor, right, who said, I'm, you know, someone made a comment about me on social media or I want to, you know, restrict access to the beach and this person doesn't want to restrict access to the beach. They're hindering my initiative to do that. It it, I don't just any point in having this.
So, yeah, and I mean, I think the way out here is just to say that, look, there are civil and criminal remedies that can take care of situations like this. We don't
Absolutely.
Totally agree, Angela.
Yes.
All right, so somebody want to make a motion to remove this section, please?
I'll make a motion to remove.
Second, second. Tyler seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, let me just I was going back and forth on this. Sorry, guys. All right, so I'll take care of that in the final version.
Oh, when this goes to council, this may smoke out somebody else, who knows?
Well, and and the, as I said, also eliminating it allows the council to return it. If there's any reason or concern.
That's what I mean.
And they could fix what they think is vague as they return it.
Correct.
I think I would interpret that they have enough flexibility to do that. I think the next change is a minor change. I don't think we have anything in boards and commissions. Yeah, it was next changes on page sixty two.
I get seasick. Look at this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Have to close my eyes.
I don't get seasick, but I'm reading things I'm not reading. If that makes sense. Eyes go right off the top of the screen.
There it is. So this is the, this is the change. We add library director.
Oh, good. Yes.
You want to put you want to put parentheses there because of Patsy?
No, but 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 we probably should take under K, we should take that and out.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
God damn it. To me, I'm saying, I'm talking to me, not anybody else.
I know.
I can't believe these little things. There we go. All right. All right, so that's it there. We're getting there, guys. And then okay, the next one is not minor. It's not major. It's not on page sixty five. Here it is. So remember the the council asked us to eliminate the clauses, including the Norwalk Public Schools under the auspices of the Board of Ed. And you rejected that notion. And so we wanted to make sure that it was repeated wherever it needs to be repeated. And that's what that that's what that does.
And why does it need to be in parentheses?
We're the grammatical people. Angela, do you have any thoughts on that? I I put it in because it was a separate concept. It's it's already included in the definition of budgeted entity. So I that that's why I had put it
It just seems that it brings undue attention to the concept.
It sticks it to them.
Which is not our intention.
Right.
First, when it goes from red to black, it won't be as noticeable.
When you read it, it is noticeable.
Now it is, yeah.
So what should, what should it be then? What you wanted in here?
Can you, can you wrote, push it down a little bit just so I can read the whole thing? Okay.
This is the one where they didn't think it was necessary because it's in the definition of budgeted entity.
I know, but we've done it. I mean, we discussed this last time, right? I mean, I think we want to highlight this just to be clear. And so it's consistent.
I'm not sure what that
Can we just have commas after entity and education? Sure, to make a clause.
What does everybody think? I mean, I'm not, you know.
That's fine. But just keep the phrase in there.
No, I will.
Yeah.
That's why I was
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I see everybody nodding. Okay, thank you. We can move on.
Okay. This is that direct, departments of direct reports. Unless you want to discuss this now, since we're in this, we just hit this section. This is, uh. There's a. Definition. Of department heads. At the beginning of the charter. That says that the department heads are directly accountable to the mayor. The reason that's in there, it's a legal requirement for labor to make sure that somebody is a. Confidential employee. And that's why when, when, um, section thirteen, definition number thirteen, department head means an employee. Who has any department in the city has substantial supervising control over other municipal employees and is directly accountable. To the mayor. The mayor appoints department heads. But we also have the structure in Norwalk, which we're now constitutionalizing. We're putting in the charter. This division chief concept. And when we get to the division chiefs, and this is repeated in every function. You'll see it here, just below it. You'll see it above it. I just stopped here because I just noticed it and I thought maybe this is the time for the discussion. It says that the department heads and other mayoral appointees. Are required to report on their functions to the division chief. Here they are reporting on their functions. It has nothing to do with accountability. They're not appointed by the division chiefs. They're appointed by the mayor. They're also approved by the, uh, the, the common council. And it's a fair distinction. I did not see it as a problem. But, um, it's been raised, so I thought you, you'd want to discuss it. I don't know how else to articulate it. It doesn't say. That they're accountable to the, the, the division chiefs. They are required to report. I was very careful crafting the language. Because I, I did not want to undermine the concept of accountability to the mayor.
Okay. And, and, and I, I raised this and my concern basically is, uh, will a, a department head. Uh, feel that they do not have to, because of this language, report. To their chief, but they can report directly to the mayor. That, that is the concept that I'm trying to deal with. Any comments?
Can you give me the definition of their functions? What does the definite, what does function mean in that?
We don't have a definition of function. It's, it would be the services that they provide within the department, whatever the. Department services that the planning and zoning department, um, provides is their function. Um, the services they provide. Uh, the, um. Are, are their functions? I don't know how, uh. That is not defined in the, in the charter. I didn't think it was one that required definition, but. It's on their functions, on their, can we say their day-to-day operations, but.
I was gonna say that, yeah. I mean, the idea is that they report into the division chief, even though the mayor has overall. Um, super, I guess accountability, supervision, or whatever you want to call it, right? I mean, I think it's more they're reporting into. Um, for their day-to-day functions.
Yes. Yeah, the whole concept of creating the division chiefs. Uh, my understanding is this happened several years ago was to streamline. The efficiency and coordination within the city. And so that the mayor wouldn't be talking directly all the time to all of the department heads, that they would go to the chiefs. And then the chiefs would talk, uh, and communicate with the mayor.
Yeah.
How about something like this?
Yeah.
Record on their day-to-day functions to the division chief. So you repeat the concept that they're accountable to the mayor and also required to report.
Because what happens when they prepare the budget? They, they present it to their chief. And then their chief presents it to, uh, to the mayor.
Yeah.
They don't go directly to the mayor with their budget, you know, and other things.
Yeah.
Is that okay? So I repeat the con, the concept of accountability.
Right.
Also required to do this.
Yes, that, that, I think that's very helpful.
One more question I have. Is there a definition of division chief?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, in the beginning.
And they report to the mayor.
Yes.
Yes. I think, uh, we don't have a chart. Well, we did have a chart of accounts. I, uh, I, of, um, staff. I don't have that with me. I think if you looked at that again, I did send it out to you all early on in this process. It would, it would show you that, that line of command. But everybody okay with that? I'm seeing all positive. Anybody negative? Okay. Thank you, Steve.
My pleasure. Give me one second. I want to.
Yeah.
Mark it in every one of my sections that need to be marked. Yeah, it's amazing. No matter how many times you go through the stock, and you're gonna find another way to clarify it. We're lucky.
Yeah, I'm try, I, I hope I don't have to read it again. I'll tell you that much.
Well, if they appoint you to the next commission, you might have to. All right. So I think I got it. All right. Very good. So the next change is, we're getting to the end. I don't know if we're ready to call, uh. Rick, yeah, a couple more minutes, we should call him. Um. Oh, yeah. So I think the next one is in the budget section. I will take the parenthetical out. In every place where we have it. That's the Norwalk Public School.
We'll use commas. We'll use commas?
Yeah.
Yes.
We use commas, yeah. I think those are the big changes here. Uh, let's see, it's in two places, A and B. There it is. Okay. And then it's in B and ten dash three. I got that one. Trying to see why I have it here. Okay, I think the next item. Is not controversial, but it's, uh, gonna require a minute of discussion anyhow. So, um. The council raised the issue. O, o, of, um, these numbers here. The, it was asked that we take a look and change this number thirty. I believe to ninety, yeah, ninety instead of thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was to, that appropriations remain on the books. For, right now it's just thirty. And the council member wanted ninety and asked us to take a look at it. And I talked to the CFO, not the CRO. The CFO. Uh, well, whatever, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get to it. The, uh, and he said, and I thought this was the right answer, is that we really have sixty days. Um, he initially wanted to leave it at thirty days. Because he feels that it provides him with more leverage over his people, but he ultimately. After we had a conversation with the mayor's office, we ultimately decided to modify it to sixty days. So we don't go to the ninety, but we leave it at sixty. But during the discussion, he brought my attention to the first paragraph, the first sentence. Uh, where it has ninety days and he thought that should be sixty days again. In, in accordance with, um, government accounting standards, it's a sixty day standard. So he thought that the provision should simply reflect the sixty day standard. So that's.
And they would need to, it would, they would need to do that. So if they're moving money, you know, it's gotta be within the same timeframe.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's why, that, that's why those numbers are what they are. And I think that, uh. Um, thank council member for bringing the issue up. Uh, and I think we end up in a slightly better place. It's not earth shattering, but at least the charter, uh, reflects. Um, the reality of the world we're living in twenty twenty-three as opposed to nineteen thirteen. Uh, again.
Everybody, everybody's okay with that?
Everybody, I'm sorry, everybody okay with that? I apologize.
That's all right. That's my job.
Yep.
Okay, everybody's in favor of, of going from thirty to sixty. Unanimous. Thank you.
Yep. And then, um, Carl, maybe you should try to get, uh, Rick on the phone. We're almost there.
You got the other including, you got another including the.
No, I got it. That's why I'm there. That's why I stopped there.
All right.
Um, that's why I stopped there. And then there's one more thing, I think, or two more minor things. Uh, oh, yes. Do you remember? The council out. A, this was a, an A and B, ten dash twenty-one. And A was one thing and B was something to do with the chair, the role of the chair. And the council thought that that was just too much in there. I believe that you, the commissioners, felt that the significant part of the chair reference. Was dealing with the issue of, of public participation. And so I drafted this language. I hope it's responsive to what you were trying to, to achieve. By leaving something in from that. The concept is that the public hearings need to be meaningful, basically. Uh, permit particip- participation with the parameters of the rules of the commission board or council. In order to facilitate the submission of views and information relative to a matter. On which a decision of each of the entities is pending. So it's basically saying you need to have meaningful public participation. So.
But, but as I recall, we, our specific instructions was that it would be held. Prior to the, uh, department heads submitting their budget. And both the people on the board of estimate and some of the council people. Uh, didn't originally agree with us on that. But this whole purpose was to answer some of the questions early on from public comments. That, that, uh, that the taxpayers only get a chance to respond to what the department heads propose. They don't get any opportunity to, uh, uh, inform, uh, the department heads of another potential. Concept.
Yeah, but we have that. That's in the, uh, beginning of the budget process.
So there's, it's prior to?
Yeah, it's section ten dash one, C, four.
Ten dash C four. Okay.
Vert your eyes, vert your eyes.
Okay, I'm gonna close my eyes.
Close your eyes. Here it is. There it is right there. The initial joint hearing.
Okay, perfect. Cause that ties together. Yes.
And all, all the section I just took you to says, those hearings need to be significant. You need to hear from the public and you need to listen to the public. Not just those, all the hearings.
All the hearings. Okay, so, um. This, when we, commissioners, when we are talking to people, uh, in the next few months. This is a very significant thing that we have done, uh, to respond to the public. Uh, interest of that they have input sooner in the budget process than they do. So is, I just want to make sure everybody has absorbed that, that change. Any comments or questions? I see none. Okay. This is a big piece of, 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 you know, of, um, what's the word? Openness in our government process. Okay.
All right. Uh, I don't know if Carl's contacted, uh, Rick. I just did.
I, I called him and left a voicemail.
All right. I just left him a text, so hopefully he'll, he'll call back in. So the last thing that I have, uh, here. Is the effective date. Um, they asked us to make sure we set an effective date. I had it, uh. Yeah, unless otherwise set forth in charter, unless we have a provision that requires something in the charter earlier than January one, twenty twenty-four. January one, twenty twenty-four is the, the effective date of the new charter. So, um.
Is, yeah, if it's, if it's, we're doing it in November, is there, was there any discussion of having it be immediately, uh, after? After the vote.
I had it initially that it'd be, uh, upon adoption by the voters. But if, let's say, I, I, I'd have to think about what the sections are that would really have to be, um. Articulated in any way, shape or form. I mean, the budget.
Budget process, the budget process.
But most of it's gonna take place after January. I mean, we could do December first.
I think it should be earlier, earliest that it.
Your call, your call.
Anybody else have any input?
I'm, I'm okay with January one.
Okay.
Because after election day is what, the eighth of the night?
I, I don't know. I haven't looked.
I think that, I think that a lot of what might be applicable that went into effect. Instantly is already gonna be done anyway. We should be well down the line for budgets and all that stuff by election day, I would hope.
We're in the middle of, we're in the middle of.
Budget dates, and most of the budget dates are in January and beyond. Um, we're not gonna be able to have the initial public hearing. That's an October public hearing, so that won't occur this year.
Yeah, right.
The submission would be by December fifteenth. That's probably true currently. I don't think that's changing really. Um, and so everything else would be after that. So they may have to make some minor adjustments in the submission and times for. February fifteenth is very, every, everything after that is in February for the budget. So that's why I didn't think January first would be a problem. I have no problem, uh, with Patsy's notion of doing it earlier. I don't think it. Buys us much, but I, that's why I did that. So, uh, whatever you guys want, it could be on, it could be, uh, um, upon passage. Or it could be on a date certain.
Any other comments?
Leave it up to you.
Commissioners. Tyler?
No, I, I didn't have any.
Oh, I thought I saw you on mute.
No, I was talking to my family.
Anybody else? Okay, so it looks like we're keeping it at January one, twenty twenty-four.
Patsy, was there anything else on your list, Patsy, that I didn't?
I don't think so. I think we.
I think I got everything else.
Before we decide on the date, Patsy, can I ask you why you wanted it earlier?
Um, I just thought, why have a gap? Uh, of time when it's becomes affect, you know, when it's voted on, to me, it should be effective when it's voted on. So. It's, there's no main reason. Other than for me, uh, I see it as efficiency.
And that's not an unusual provision. What Patsy's recommending is not unusual. The only reason I made the slight modification was to give any, any planning. I don't think it has much impact either way. I think that, uh, if you want to go to the effective upon adoption, I don't think it does any injustice to anything, frankly. She can go either way, any way you want. I apologize.
Any other comments? Nobody?
Uh, can I make a motion that we keep it at January first?
Sure you may. And somebody would second it, please?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, and the ayes have it. Okay, January one, twenty twenty-four.
I think that's it. Um, just to, if I may, just to buy a little more time before you take your final vote to give. Give Rick every opportunity I've.
I just called him again, Stephen.
I just texted him, I texted him twice. Um, is there anything, Patsy, in the transmit, the transmitter letter is gonna be? Uh, I'm gonna try to do a little briefer than the original one. Do you want me to repeat? Um, the major accomplishments? We have to repeat and tell the council, this is what we did. Your recommendations, that I'll do. But do you want me to repeat the accom, the accomplishments of this one more time?
Yeah, can you, uh, in the accomplishments, I don't think we have that new, uh, hearing prior to the, the budgetary.
The budgetary hearing, the pre-budget.
I don't think that's in there. And I think that would be significant.
Yeah, I don't think it's in there either, but I, I would agree with you, it should be.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else, I will definitely put that in, anybody else on concepts, uh, are there words we should use to describe what we're doing that, uh, you think would be useful for.
Can we go back to that section just quickly, so that we.
Which one's that?
What, the one you're talking about, where we define what we addressed?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. And, you know, and we, there are things that we did address and, and we have taken out, um, we, I don't think we say here.
What do you want to add in here? Do you want to add the budget thing in here?
That was my thought. Because it was very significant to some key people that attended many of our meetings.
I think that, that's a great thought, I think you can go a little broader, but I would say that. But I think that what you've done with the budget pro- the first time in the history of the, um, you're gonna have a budget processor that a citizen can look at and know where it starts and know where it ends and, and also, most significantly, starts with the citizens. Without pre-budgetary.
Yes.
All right, so I'll, yeah.
And the gender neutral piece is important to a lot of people.
So you want to add ge- gender neutrality?
Yeah. And, and then the other thing is, you know, we've taken out the four-year term for the mayor, but we did discuss it at length and we've said it should be brought up in the next um, charter revision, do we want to say that?
You're probably better off leaving it.
I wouldn't touch it.
If we pass, if we pass this one, there's gonna be hearing, there's gonna be a charter in two years, we're really gonna get the four-year term, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, I'm just, you know, trying to think of things, we've spent a lot of time on.
Anybody else, and I'll add this language, I'll run, what I'll do is, I, I have to get this done tomorrow. What I will do is I'll send it out to everybody, I'll send it to Patsy, obviously, but send it to everybody else as well. Rick McQuade is responding to me, let's see what he's doing here. Um, trying to get service.
Okay.
All right, he's trying to, he's trying to get in.
He could just call in, but.
But that, that makes sense. Write the voicemail and I call.
Yeah. I think.
If he, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think a general statement, the first statement should, that our goal was to uh, have the most, uh, clarify as much as possible clarity within our within our, uh, our charter as possible, that was our main goal.
Clarity and simplicity.
Yeah. And, and.
And keeping Mednick, and keeping Mednick from writing too much legalese, right?
Yes. Yeah.
We've achieved that goal.
Okay, so is, um, Rick available or not?
I don't know if he's got a signal, right? I think that's why when I called him, it went right to voicemail, he doesn't have a signal.
Okay.
He texted, he texted me.
Where is Rick, Rick's son's getting married, is that where?
Hopefully not Hawaii.
Yeah, particularly Maui.
Um, okay, so I think it's time to vote. Uh, so, um, the motion to accept the charter as, um, amended this evening is in order.
Steve, is it, i- is it legally okay for uh, Rick, if he can't contact us, to give his proxy vote to somebody else on the?
No, no.
No. Can he, can he text it in?
If we can get him on, if we can get him on the cell phone and you could hear his voice and he could hear you, uh, that's all we need, is you want to give him one more minute to see if we can.
All right, so, so while we're doing that.
Benita just asked a good question, okay, if he texted his vote in, is that legal?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so while we're waiting for that, I just, uh, want to first of all thank all of the commissioners, uh, I've really enjoyed getting to know you and working with you and, and hoping, uh, that the relationship somehow is gonna continue. And I guess to that end, uh, I have, uh, scheduled several, uh, meetings, uh, with the district, uh, taxing districts, the first, second, third, and I'm working on a date for the sixth, which I will email out to you, uh, some are Zoom and some are in person. But it would be wonderful if, uh, some of you can join me with these meetings. And then, um, obviously, all of us will be reaching out to our connections in our communities, uh, to, um, get support for this, all this hard work that we've done. So thank you very much, and I really do appreciate your cooperation. So.
Uh, Rick, Rick is here.
Yes, you may, Benita.
Where?
Rick?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, good, I'm a junior speaker.
Where will the final report be able to be accessed by the populace?
The final report will be filed, in fact, the town clerk, I got the town clerk here, by the way. Um, can, can, Rick, can you hear everybody?
Yes, yes, yes.
Does everybody hear Rick?
Yes.
Okay, so Rick is, Rick is now here.
Yeah.
So I'll point out for the record.
Excuse me, that Rick McQuade is on, uh, the, um, meeting through, uh, telephone.
Right, we'll get you on very quickly, um, um, Benita, the answer is Rick McQuade will have them in his office, the town clerk. We, we file with the town clerk, the city clerk will have it as well, but officially, the town clerk will have the record. There will be a publication within thirty days of the approval by the council, if the council approves and, um, and members of the public will be entitled to pick up copies, if they want copies, at the town clerk's office, and I'm sure that it will be posted as well.
Okay, thank you.
So since we have Rick and he's under, he's got family obligations here.
We're ready to go, we have a vote, we have a motion, uh, to accept uh, the charter as.
Make a motion that we accept the charter as it is, what we looked at and we went through today.
And I second the emotion.
All those in favor, any further discussion?
Your real call.
Okay, Benita, Rob.
Here.
Yes, 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 uh, Angela?
Yes.
Yes, Tyler?
Aye.
Carl?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Rick McQuade?
Absolutely, yes.
And Patsy Brusher, yes.
Unanimous.
So unanimous. And, and thank you, Attorney Mednick, for all your hard work and all your guidance and tolerance.
And thank you.
I second that.
And if I may, if I may, just thank everybody, um, I do this a lot. This has been a wonderful group, Patsy's been a terrific leader, uh, to work with. And, um, all of you have been outstanding, and, um, I'm, I'm, I will miss all of you, uh, some, some, some commissioners I don't miss so much, this one I will miss. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe after the election, we can all get together and celebrate.
Yes.
Oh, that would be nice.
That would be great.
Uh, I don't know if it's, it's not technically official yet, but, uh, I think my band's gonna be playing at the Norwalk Oyster Festival on the eighth of November, so. Everybody know.
Perfect, okay.
Rock on.
All right.
See you all then.
Take care, have a good night.
A motion to adjourn is in order.
I second it.
Okay, who for, who made the motion?
You did. Angela seconded.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
The commission is.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Bye bye.